Thank you, we can as well as on Zoom. So if you're, if you don't want to be seen or heard, please keep your mic and your video off. I always forget to say this, but you can always reach the planning board at planningboard@winchester.us email to that. Address goes to the entire planning board as well as to our town planner, Brian Zekely. We have with this evening with us also. Our recording secretary Nancy Polkary. And why don't I go around and do a roll call vote on the planning board members? We do have a quorum. Just say present. Eting Scott.
Present.
Cheryl Wolf.
Present.
Kurt Spring.
Present.
And Dab Jerry is present. So we have a packed schedule as usual. We're going to very quickly go through some meeting minutes. We have an A and R for property on Main Street. I believe that's where the current the Maniki Muffler is. We are going to continue our public hearing on 10 Congress Place. And then we are going to be something of a change of pace. We're going to be talking with the Mystic River Watership Association about Davidson Park. We have a revisit to a project at 21 Laurel Hill Lane, and then we will be going into executive session to continue our performance evaluation. And I think that will fill up our entire evening. So why don't we start with meeting minutes? Brian, if you could pop those up?
Um, yep, give me a second on that. And Sally Dale did just sign in.
Yes, I'm sorry to be late.
Okay, can you identify yourself as Sally Dale Sally?
Yes, this is Sally Dale speaking.
Excellent, thank you.
There's, there were two packets that got sent out, one that had the minutes and one that didn't, and I might need some help at DM if.
Would you like to me to share my screen and I can pop mine up?
That would be great for the minutes and then I can handle everything else.
Okay. Okay, let's see what happens. I, you need to.
Should be good now.
Okay, there we go. Share screen, okay. Okay, well, I had it open just a few seconds ago, so. Go. Okay, so we have in front of us, let me make this a little wider. These are the minutes for Tuesday, February 1st, 2022. Everyone see that?
Yep, also.
Okay, so are there any comments on this one?
Sally Dale has a comment.
Sally Dale, please go ahead.
Um, I have a last name for the last name in the others attending list.
Oh, the Karen person?
Yeah, she goes by Corinne and her last name is G A L I L.
Okay, Karen Galio.
And then I have questions on page two. So I just thought it would be helpful for number four to have where Brian was talking about, um, let's see, the 416 and River Street, 416, that SLV stands for strategic land ventures. And I just thought it would be helpful to have that in there.
Uh, thank you. Yes, that would be very helpful.
And, um, uh, actually, that was the only it's the only thing I have.
Okay, excellent. So can I get a motion to approve the minutes for Tuesday, February 1st, 2022?
So moved.
And a second, please.
Second.
A roll call vote. Cheryl.
Aye.
Sally.
Aye.
Kurt.
Aye.
Eching.
Aye.
And I say aye as well. The up says aye. Great. So that is number one. Let's see what we have next. Okay, so this was a very short one, I believe. So this is for Tuesday, February 8th, the 2020, um, 2022. Any comments on this one?
I have none.
Okay, this is a very short one because we immediately went into executive session. Uh, do I have a motion, please, for approval of the minutes for Tuesday, February 8th, 2022?
So moved.
And a second, please.
Second.
And roll call vote. Um, I guess I can't call on you, Cheryl, because you weren't there. Um, Kurt Spring.
Aye.
Uh, Sally Dale.
So Cheryl can't move it, right?
Yeah, then it.
I'll move it.
Okay, thank you. I thought that was Sally who moved, but thank you. Uh, so each ring has moved. Um, I think someone please second that again.
Second.
Okay, uh, this time let's go through Kurt.
Aye.
Sally.
Aye.
Eching.
Aye.
And the ups is aye as well. So that is passed. Thank you very much. Now let us go to, I believe, was that it for our public meetings? Nope, one more, February 15th. And there it is. Okay. So this is Tuesday, February 15th. Uh, any amendments to this one? If not, I would welcome a motion to approve the minutes for Tuesday, February 15th.
So moved.
Thank you. And a second.
Sorry, I couldn't hit my mute button fast enough. I'm really sorry. I just had a question um, about the page three after the first bulleted list where Brian stated that commercial parking inside the garage will be for the employees. Um, he has this sentence, there is no on-street parking required for this project and handicap parking is available in the town center. And I, that didn't sound right to me, but I just thought I would ask, is that correct?
Um, yes, that's correct. It's unclear how many handicap spaces would be available for the employees, but the commercial parking uh, for the moment, which hasn't really been decided uh, in general, uh, would be most likely for the employees simply because uh, going in and out of there would be, it would make sense for them to, to have a spot on location rather than taking up spots on the street.
Right, okay. So, um, will be for employees and then there's no on-street. There's no on-street parking required for this project.
Yeah, meaning that you can't force a certain number of spaces to be dedicated to just that business in the town center. There's, there are, we have, um, you know, we have lots of, of parking uh, in several places downtown in the, in, um, in bigger lots as well as on-street parking and it's for everyone. We can't designate specific on-street spaces for specific businesses.
That would be a better way to word it because it does say in the bylaws that for every thousand square feet of commercial, you need to have, I forget what it is, point seven five or whatever parking spaces and there's 2,000 square feet of commercial. So that would be, I guess that would be one and a half or two spaces. And I just, to say there's none required.
No, it, it, no, it's, uh, it says that there's no on-street park.
No on-street required.
The first line, so, so the point is that the parking on the street is communal to everyone. It's not owned by the.
Okay, so then, the, the, so then it perhaps should say there's no dedicated on-street parking because I mean, the fact is that it says in the zoning bylaw that you have to have a certain number of parking spaces per thousand square feet of commercial and this would contradict that.
It does not contradict that.
The, the first sentence, they, they have to provide parking on their property. And that would be the property inside of the garage.
Okay, so the assumption is that the requirement that for commercial parking that's listed in the zoning bylaw, um, it's okay if that gets used up by employees, it just needs to be available.
It's silent on what, just to be clear, it's silent on whether or on how it should be used for the commercial spaces.
Okay, I don't want to take any more time on this. Thank you.
Okay, so, um, are there any other, are there any amendments for this? Or if not, I would welcome a motion to approve the minutes for Tuesday, February 15th.
So moved. I'm on this one.
You're on this one and I even recognize your voice. That's Cheryl. Um, a second, please.
Okay.
Uh, that was each in. Uh, so, uh, roll call vote, please. Cheryl.
Aye.
Sally.
Aye.
Kurt.
Aye.
Eching.
Aye.
And the of Jerry says aye as well. Thank you very much. I believe at this point I'm going to turn my screen off and send it back to Brian. Is that correct? Brian, are you with us?
Yes, right here.
Because I think we're done with the public. We're done with all the public minutes, so.
Okay.
So I'm going to try to turn this off. We'll see what happens. There we go. Okay, so at this point in our agenda, we are going to be looking at an A and R, which stands for approval not required. Uh, which the board looks at because it's part of our subdivision um, role given to us by the state or the Commonwealth. In this particular lot.
Yeah, so, um, this is 972 Main Street. Uh, this is the Mineki site. So, uh, the applicant is, uh, plans to divide this lot. Uh, currently it's, it's one, it's one lot, it's 12,000 square feet. And it's trying to divide it into two 6,000 square foot parcels. Um, there's no minimum square footage necessary for, uh, commercial entities in this zone, which is the GBD three. Um, but if the applicant wishes to build a single-family home or a duplex on this dwelling, it wouldn't be allowed because you need 6,500 square feet. So based upon this, it appears that two commercial entities are planned for the site, one on each side of two 6,000 square foot um, parcels. That's what it's allowed by zoning. The necessary frontage of 50 feet is met and access would be over that frontage. So all other, all of the other plan contents have been adhered to. And I recommend endorsing the A and R. Um, that, that's all I, um, I have for that.
Uh, thank you. Are there any comments, Cheryl?
I have a question, Brian. So based on the, um, the requirements, you, you talked about frontage. What's the, what's the footprint of a building that would go on a property at 6,000 square feet?
Uh, any ideas? Yeah, I'm just, um, and the setbacks there, the side setbacks, if it's against another commercial could be right, right up against it. Um, so it's really, so the, um, they, they, but then I don't know why they would be splitting the parcels. So it's, it's, it's kind of on, to be, to be fair, it's unclear what's going on here. I, yeah, when the applicant came in, or it wasn't necessarily the applicant, it was someone delivering this. I'm looking at this and I'm saying they can only do commercial. Well, I don't know if they're trying to build a duplex. I don't know what they're trying to do here, but you can either build one duplex or that's it because they're splitting, but now since they're splitting lots and we didn't really know what was going on, but the way it's being set up is that it's two commercial units uh, where the side setbacks are, are pretty tight, pretty tight. Uh, but there is, you know, rear setback of, you know, 15 feet. Um, but.
15 on the rear. What's on the front? Sorry.
I don't know. But yeah, it's pretty, it's pretty close. It's trying to, I mean, it's trying to promote more commercial. I mean, the GB three is trying to promote more commercial, so.
Right, but it, does the 15 feet actually provide enough space for, um, parking for a commercial property?
Again, I don't know how this, I, I had a lot of these same questions, which are not really part of our analysis, but um, in terms of more of curiosity about what could be going on here. Um, but, you know, it has every, it has, you know, it has everything it needs in terms of our role here. In terms of the necessary frontage and access over that frontage. But I do not know much further than that.
All right, so the next hoop to jump through is going to deal more with what they're going to propose.
And, and my, get my more than large guess is it's going to be two commercial properties, one on each of the, one on each of the parcels.
Well, I, I certainly hope that the, um, the owners of this property reach out to you to make sure that they are, they understand the limitations on the project or on the, on the, on the, uh, the lots. Just so they don't make a mistake, but um, that is in the future. So is there a motion to endorse?
I have a question here. Um, if we're supposed to approve a subdivision um, without, well, we don't need approval. We're supposed to agree that we don't need to approve this.
Endorse.
We endorse it.
We're endorsing this subdivision. But we've had a conversation about, we don't know what they're using the land for. And we're not clear what kind of property they're putting on there. Should our endorsement have a condition on it?
That's not how this works, unfortunately.
It doesn't work that we, that we actually know.
You cannot put a condition on.
Because they can, they can do this by right, Sally.
Oh, okay, okay.
And so the only thing, and if we don't approve it, then it just goes through anyway. It just makes it more difficult for them. They're going to get the approval. So this is, um.
Right, I guess to someone's point just now, they'll come back in front of us anyway when they have to do something.
They will come back probably before the, the ZBA because they are.
Or they'll do something by right. We, nobody knows here.
Yeah, yeah, we don't know anything.
Good, thank you. Um, just clarify.
Uh, I believe that you need to, um, there's special language because we're doing this virtually, Brian, because we are not actually writing our names down on the Mylar. Can you remind me of what that special language we have to put in is?
Um, endorsing the A and R and, um, giving the clerk, uh, permission to memorialize that.
Okay, so can I please get a motion to endorse the A and R and give the town clerk permission to memorialize our endorsement?
So moved.
Thank you. And the second.
Second.
Beat it. Okay, roll call vote, please. Cheryl.
Aye.
Sally.
Aye.
Kurt.
Aye.
Eching.
Aye.
And the up says aye as well. Thank you all very much. Okay, uh, we're only five minutes late. Uh, that's a record. So right now we are continuing the public hearing on 10 Congress Place. We are, at the moment, we have most of our consultant and committees reports in hand. And so I wanted to go through what we have and what we expect to get. I apologize, there's a phone ringing in the background here. So the, uh, we have received, uh, we have received a memo from the Housing Partnership Board. Uh, we have received a memo from the Historical Commission. Um, we have a memo from, um, Philip Chen, our design consultant. Um, we have received, um, draft notes from the, um, Design Review Committee and uh, the Design Review Committee has asked to give us a short presentation um, this evening on, to summarize those, which I think will be really useful. There seemed to be a very divided opinion on the DRC. And so, um, we, that would be a good thing to listen to. We're still waiting on a tool, I believe.
So Erica Guida Boney is, is here for, uh, any, um, she was going to briefly talk, um, about, uh, uh, the, any concerns that she might have. Sorry to talk for you, Eric. I'm just trying to move this along. Um, and so, but there will, it seems like the next meeting, uh, will focus more on uh, the VHB memo. Um, and engineering just came out with a memo today that we, um, did not have time to review either. So it seems like those two will kind of dovetail more at the next meeting, um, but Erica's here for questioning.
Okay, and then we had a list of questions that were provided to Brian for, um, Admiliore and um, I understand that they do not have a written memo for us today, but they have made notes and could respond to some of those statement or those, those requests for information. Um, am I missing anything here?
Um, no, I believe, um, that is everything. Yep.
Okay, so, um, why don't we, um, okay. Let me see. So why don't we turn it over to the DRC first? Unfortunately, I presume the, um, Tom Spencer's here, but I cannot see her. There she is. Thank you.
Um, I will, I will get up, um.
Sorry, I was just waiting till you got, I didn't want to be barging in early.
Okay.
Nobody with us. Just don't call us late for dinner.
Okay, here we go. Um, there you go, Alan.
Oh, thanks. Uh, and thanks, thanks, DM. Um, I just wanted to act, I know I have very little time, wanted to, um, uh, basically read, um, a brief statement because our draft minutes, which, um, it was a very long meeting, um, complicated draft minutes are currently being revised and I'm sure they were confusing to follow. So I just want to start. And the slide you're seeing now is, um, two images, uh, one of the proposed building, uh, from the library town hall and then the current, compared with a current, um, view. I just wanted to reiterate that the DRC vote was four to three favorable action with the following conditions. Remove a floor and make the building narrower. Um, I just need to point out that the draft meeting minutes, they will be changed, they read incorrectly. Um, it says remove the top floor. It should read, remove a floor. Um, and edited draft minutes are forthcoming, um, either tonight or tomorrow. Um, in the bylaws, CBD bylaws, the Design Review Committee is charged with evaluating design issues within the central business district, including size, mass and form, the fundamental components of design. And that's what we've done uh, in these minutes. Um, because this has been such an overriding concern, we have not yet discussed more detailed design matters such as window types and rhythms, brick colors and, um, and so on. And I just wanted to call everyone's attention again to the presentation made at the DRC's February 16th meeting, um, which is actually not in your packet, but was sent as an attachment to the draft minutes. It analyzes the size and massing of the proposed building factually using images from the architect's presentation and digital model as well as dimensional comparisons to the existing Mill Pond building and neighboring structures. Uh, it also prevents relevant language from the bylaws such as section 7.3.17.1, which says all new structures must be compatible with Winchester's historic architecture and sense of place as well as criteria in sections 9.4, special permits and 9.5 site plan review, all of which the DRC is tasked to consider in their recommendation to the planning board. Um, I'd also like to point out, um, it, that there was near universal agreement um, in the minutes that, um, the top floor, um, still needs some work to successfully integrate in, it into the village roof scape of the town center. Um, because it's going to be so visible from the streets and open spaces of our town center as well as from frankly, the neighboring hills. Our town center is in a bowl a bit. Um, Brian, could you just, um, put the next slide on? Um.
Uh, sorry, did you, did you?
Yeah, can you go up?
Yeah, yeah, sorry. I'm, I don't know if.
Go the other way.
Yeah.
Okay, um, in closing, I, uh, just want to say that the DRC does not object to the overall building design in and of itself. It's not right for the site. It's too big. And I just want to show you the footprint of the current Mill Pond building, which is in the, um, the smaller imprint with the diagonal lines going through it and the proposed new building, which is the larger dot dashed lines, which fill practically the whole lot. We did the calculations and it's five times the size of the Mill Pond building. And with mechanicals, um, it's the height of the park view. So the mass is, um, the, the result is a very, very large massive monolith. Um, and I, uh, we, the majority vote on DRC is that it overwhelms its natural built setting and obstructs vistas. And just want to close with saying that this is such a critical spot in the CBD to get right. Um, that, uh, probably, I don't, I don't think there is a more critical spot. Thank you. Oh, couldn't you go to the last slide, Brian? There you go. Thank you. That's it for me.
Uh, Dab, you're muted. Yeah, I'm still muted.
How's that?
Much better.
Thank you. Uh, thank you very much. Uh, for your very concise presentation. I appreciate that. And please stick around in case the board has, um, questions for you. Um, I, I want, I think at this point, uh, what we should then do is go through the list of questions, Brian, that you were given and that were handed over to the, um, proponents. So we can go through those.
Um, I mean, for the applicant to answer those questions or?
Well, why don't we bring them up so that the public should, and I should, I, I'm sorry, Brian, you, you, you asked me to do this and I forgot. So we have been receiving, uh, quite a number of comments about this project. I have a feeling that it blew up on social media because we got a flurry of comments over the weekend and. About this project. I have a feeling that it blew up on social media because we got a flurry of comments over the weekend and last week. So we do have those all. Brian has put those together. They are all, they have been, everyone on the planning board has them. And they are up on the planning board's website. So again, we love hearing your comments.
Cheryl has it handled.
She'll go ahead. I'm sorry, I don't see.
That's okay, DM. I was wondering, you mentioned that Tool is also going to make a presentation. Is it possible that we actually hear that presentation before we go to comments? Because it might actually include. It might reflect on some of the comments from the public.
Oh, I, I'm sorry. I wasn't planning on reading the comments from the public right now.
Okay.
This was just, I'd like us to get, we have our chance to talk to all the consultants. That we are available in our boards right now. And so I'd like the board to. To use this time for the board to ask those questions since they're all here. So, yeah, Brian, if you could bring up that list of questions and then maybe we can go through some of them. I know were more technical. There were a number of questions about the parking system and maybe that's something we can leave for. Well, let's, let's see.
I'm sorry, just have to give me a second. I was, I was, I had, I thought we were going, because Ellen was presenting from the Design Review. I thought we were going to go straight into if there were any questions for Design Review based upon their memo or what Ellen was going to be saying. And then go through each of the board and committees that we had here. So. Sorry, if. Yeah.
How does a, I, I, yeah, that is a valid way of looking at it. How would the board like to proceed? Would the board like to proceed and ask questions of Ellen for, on behalf of the Design Review Committee?
I think that may make more sense, just to.
Okay.
You just had to speak.
I would agree. Rather than going backward.
Okay, so I apologize. Ellen, I, I hope you, you're still with us. So why don't we, if the board has questions about the analysis presented by Design Review, please go forward. Go ahead. Floor is yours. Let's try to keep it to a couple of minutes apiece, please.
So I have a question, Ellen, about how the DRC. Was actually considering the open public space associated with the existing site as well as the proposed. The proposed project. What I, what I see in the images that you presented. Is a, is the proposed building with no trees and. No, it basically looked like it was on a beachfront. And then what I saw in the. Existing versus new in terms of footprint is. A question for me is how the DRC was considering public amenity. In terms of that very large piece of. Undeveloped landscape. On the Mount Vernon side that really does not provide. Public amenity currently. In terms of the site. So I just wondered if, if the DRC reflected on that in their deliberations or their consideration of the project.
We had some discussion during the meeting about the landscape plan that was presented. One of our members, Julie Reiman Schneider is a landscape. Architect, I think most people know her. And. There was a lot on the, there was a, it was a long meeting. There was a lot on, on the, a lot of things to be discussed. So we. She, we discussed it. We asked some, she asked some questions about it. And, but we didn't get it into, we were not able to get into a. Intensive discussion about it, other than to, I. Gave her some of the, the. Details such as, I believe, saving the large willow tree and where other. In general, where other trees would be. And it was just kind of agreed that this was something that obviously. We would be taking a look at more closely at. If another meeting.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, I had a question if it's okay. I'm gonna go. First of all, I just wanted to thank the.
Yes, go, go.
It looks like a lot of time obviously went into analyzing this. I really appreciate, as always, you know, the members of our town spending time to do this. My question may be Ellen for you. Maybe one quick question, then one longer question, the quick one first. In understanding the conditions, there was a reference to, you know, removing a floor and then just making the building narrower. Is it possible for the. For you to maybe put a finer point on what, what you mean by narrower? And the magnitude of that and where? I know the, it sounded like, it sounded like the narrower was more in relation to the, the Mill Pond side. But I think just in, in the interest of being fair to the developer, it might just be helpful to put a finer point on narrower.
Yeah, and I can't answer that myself because again, we. But right at this, at this moment, I would need to. That language just isn't really in our minutes because several people felt that the. In addition to whatever the, we feel the height issues are, it was also the, the bulk. And so. Again, it was a long, complicated meeting with the, with the developer present and. Participating and after two hours. You know, we. Made a recommendation. That we knew was going to need to have some further explanation. They. Edit, the edited draft minutes are what you will get. Either tonight, later tonight or tomorrow. So I, but we would probably have to. We did not go so far as to. Specify how much narrower. That's what I can say about that.
Okay. And my other question was, and the answer may be that this really. Wouldn't have been part of the discussion because it really isn't part of Design Review, but there was there any consideration or discussion? About the cost benefit of losing a floor versus losing additional housing units, including potentially an affordable housing unit downtown?
That is not our purview. So no, and it's not, it's not that it's un. It's not that it's unacknowledged. We just felt that there's so many people weighing in on all the aspects of this that we had so much to discuss that that was not something. I guess, I guess one thing I would say about that, and I believe I did say in our minutes was that. This is. This is the first major kind of test of these new CBD guidelines. And it's, I understand that it's difficult, you know, for one, one, I don't think one building can, can, can solve. All issues equally. So. That, you know, there will going forward be other. Proposals in town that will also have housing. And that. The. Current kind of size and lack of. What we felt was a, a, a lack of real sensitivity to the historic buildings around it and the downtown itself, you know. That's forever. And that, and that there will be other chances to get more housing and all, and more. More retail too. This, this has all those components, of course, but it, 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 it can't, it can't be the one thing that. You know, solves all these issues, the one building that solves all these issues for the town. And I just think that the. Anyway, that's all I'll say about that.
Thanks, I appreciate it.
Those are hard questions. Thank you, Ellen.
Yeah.
I'm just gonna jump in because I have a question that's really connected with Kurt's question. And that is, I know that one of the things you talked about was. The, the usefulness of the, the bike path, which is winding along around the building. And the fact that you were concerned that the, the. The width of the space next to, I'm gonna say across from town hall might be too narrow. And I know that's something that. Sally brought up last time as well in that. Winding the path around the building, brought it very close to the building. It made it difficult to, there was an outlook, an overlook that was proposed. And so. Do you have, and I, I think I know from your answer is you didn't go into this detail. What sort of width is appropriate to make that a really useful? Side. Thank you, Brian.
I, I, that is something that we need, I, I think needs to be determined. And I'm not, I can't be the one to tell you that. I don't know. Julie might be able to. But, but. But it, it's also an issue that would be. Aided somewhat if the footprint of the building was a little bit smaller. But I, I, I don't, you know, I'm not. I, I don't have. I suspect there were actual numerical standards for that, and I just don't know what, what they are. We could do some research on it. But so could the, the landscape designer could too.
Yeah, I just, you know, this, just wondering if you, if you had a chance to go into more details. Thank you. Appreciate your answer.
Yeah, can I say something? Just a quick question.
Go ahead.
Yeah, okay, so thanks, Ellen. I, I feel like your committee especially has an acute understanding of. What an FAR means, right? Most, I think that most people don't, but you know, FAR of two point five versus FAR of two point oh. As well as sort of the, the dimensions of housing, right? There, there are very, very distinct. Proportions that housing has to be in order for it to work in, in kind of these complexes. And with the site like this, this is with, which is a rectangular site. And be able to put housing in is it's essentially a double loaded quarter. And I, I know your, your biggest issue here is with footprint as well as with height. And just, you know, it was a discussion about how I don't want you to solve it. I mean, as the architects, you know, but, but I think that you guys have some members who are. More aware of some of these issues that when you, when you squeeze it in, it comes higher or that, you know, if there's too little perimeter. It's, there's very little space for bedrooms and things like that. So I'm just wondering what sort of, if there were, you know, discussions about that and how to. How to, how, how that came to be, like why, you know, I think that. Maybe.
Yicheng, thank you. There, we, we have discussed some of that and I noticed that my co commissioner, Jamie Duval had her hand up. She is an architect and she is one specifically that has had some, a, a lot of ideas. And I don't know if you want to hear from her. Briefly at this point or not, but she would, you know, she, because there are some issues frankly, even at this size with. Windowless rooms, as you know, bonus spaces, I guess they're being called now. And. Anyway, she, she, I don't see her now. She did have her hand up. I obviously can't speak to it. I'm not an architect.
Yeah.
But if you, if you would like to reach out to any of us, I'm sure we could. Give you some information. There's her hand, I see her.
Maybe quickly, Jamie, if you could speak on that, just sort of an understanding of what, you know, housing demands in terms of dimensions and how, how they're set up when you stack them on top of each other. You know, you're, you're asking for it to decrease as well, as well as decrease in height. So, you know, what? What are, why are we? You know, what, what are we gaining and what are we losing by doing that?
Right. Thank you. Clearly, if we make the building narrower and we take off a story, it will no longer be three point zero FAR. And I think all along. We've seen only the three point zero FAR. And I think. Just personally, looking at the size and the massing is just too much and we haven't seen anything a bit less. So. I think there's no magic. That we can do by taking off a story and making it narrower and keeping it three point zero FAR. But also like in the course of the discussion, I. Just threw out a number for making it narrower. And of course, we can't design the building. But I was thinking like. Twelve feet, fifteen feet. I don't really know what it would be, but. I, I just, you know. In, right now we have pretty deep units and we do have those interior spaces with no windows. It would just make it more of a reasonable. Double loaded residential. You know, development with really the units closer to the windows and every room having operable windows. I just think it'd be more pleasant for the people who live there. It'd be more pleasant for both. The people looking at the building or using the bike path. And it'd be more pleasant for the people who live there too, for that matter. So I don't know if that answers your question.
Yeah, I think, I think just that it, it seems like it, the three point oh is what is impossible sort of in your, in your.
In my mind it is. And I think I mentioned before I went to the meeting where I believe. You know, we were looking at, not we, the planning board and the developer were looking at three point zero FAR. With different. Dimensions for width and height. And it was all a rectangle. This is two years ago. You know, that you get the building wider, wider, it goes down in height. You make it narrower, it goes up in height. And I, I just remember the planning board liking the middle ground. And I think that's what we got, but clearly it would be less than three point zero FAR. If we made it narrower and took a story off.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
I, I was at that meeting where we first saw this and my notes go back two years on this. And I think the planning board was very interested in the open space provided by the taller one. But so there was, there was certainly a very mixed opinion on the planning board at the time and over the next year. As to the direction this project might take, which is why we went from starting out with. Much narrower, or a narrower building and it's now wider because of design decisions, yeah.
Yeah, and in a follow up, can we ask the other boards that are present about that very issue? Because I feel like the, the fact that we're going to three point oh. FAR is not just from a design issue, but is, is from a housing perspective, right? Where our, our board, even though we have two architects on the board are just, you know, it's. Tasked with the economic and social and cultural vitality of the CBD. And the three point oh, the extra point five FAR is specifically for diversity of housing that community needs. So. I'd be curious from the Housing Partnership Board, like what, what consequences there would be should be lose.
I think that's, that there's, you know, I mean, you've, you've highlighted what this board has to do. The board has to take the input from all of these committees. And, and our consultants and weigh them and stack them against. All of the different things that we require of a development downtown. So yes, I think we will be talking to the other committees. I think that why don't we? Keep that thought in your mind. So when we, when we, when we get finished speaking with Ellen, we can maybe move on to another. You know, and look at those issues. Was there, I know, I'm sorry, I've lost Sally. I think you're still there, Sally. Did you want to say something?
No, I'm in listening mode right now.
Okay. So then I think that for now, I think those are our questions for the, for the Design Review Committee. Ellen, thank you much. I realize this was a very difficult thing to go through. And it seems you're, at least from the minutes of your meeting, you had, it was. A very complicated, but I think a very complicated discussion.
I, I will just say that the, the port recording secretary. Initially didn't, could only submit twenty five pages of transcript, which it was that complicated. So hopefully the revised ones you're about to get will. Will. Will be helpful. Thank you.
And, and, and I do have one procedural question, and that's something that we, our board has talked about in the past, is that when votes are as close as they are. We have talked about having both a majority and a minority report. Do you know whether or not you will be getting sort of a minority report as well as a majority report?
We've never done that. If you want it, I, I can ask those people if they want to do it. I think. I, I would ask that you look at the revised minutes, which have a lot more of the discussion, you know, in them. And include not just my voice, which you're all used to hearing. And if that's something you want to hear, then after that, let me know.
It's, I think it's up to your board. I mean, however.
We have a meeting next week, so I can, we can raise that.
Yeah, it's. Brian, were you about to say something?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that there, so there are representatives this evening of a chair.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that there, so there are representatives this evening from, of a chair of the Historical Commission as well as, uh, the Chair of the Housing Partnership Board. And then the goal of this evening, um, the hope was to get as much as through as we can of, of, of talking to these boards and committees. So that would leave Historical Commission, Housing Partnership Board, um, the Design Review Consultant Philip Chen and Tool Design Consultant Erica Goodboni. So that's four more things that we're trying to do in the next fifty minutes. I do think that is possible. But just to let you know where we're going or the goal, I guess, for the evening. Okay. Was to get through that, which is a decent amount of questions. So I'll turn it back over to you, D F, to pick a board or committee to go forward with.
Um, did you say five zero or one five?
No, five zero.
Thank you.
He said fifty.
Okay, that's, I was hoping you said that. I don't, I don't have, uh.
Uh, yeah, not the time warp that you thought it might have been.
Okay, um, so we also have a list of questions that were, um, that we, that we gave to the proponents. Um, I think that, um, I think we're starting to get in some interesting questions right now. I think it might be worthwhile to continue through the, um, speaking maybe with Historical and Housing Partnership to, to try to help us weigh in on, on what the trade-offs are if we, if we do go to a different volume on this building. So, um, let's see, um, would the board like to speak with, uh, Historical or with Housing Partnership next?
Really like to, um, speak with Housing Partnership.
Okay.
John Serbeer, John Serbeer is here. Uh, should be able to. Mute if he's available.
So we actually had, um, two, hey, John, I just want to, as, as background, the Housing Partnership Board submitted two memos. One of which was a discussion of what the, there is a, there is a, uh, if you want a three point O F A R and a P U D, you have to provide a diversity of housing. That phrase is not well defined and the Housing Partnership Board weighed in on that in a memo from last year. And then we also saw a memo from this year in the Housing Partnership Board's review of the current layout and how it fit in. So why don't, and with, within, within the D H C D requirements as well as, um, or what we were hoping to get out of, um, housing, affordable housing in the center. So why don't we open up to the board if you have some questions for John? Please go ahead. Yep.
Hi, I'm Serbeer. Um, thank you for your, um, your, 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 what do you call it? A response. And I, I really appreciated the, the detail. As you know, the, the P U D, so we're, we're, we're really, um, we're getting a lot of comments about just how, how big this, this thing is, right? The three point O F A R. And so the P U D, uh, allows the board, um, to give an extra point five above the special permit, um, should it, should the project, um, give us, uh, diversity of housing that the community needs. Um, and be mixed use with a substantial, um, number of units. And I was just wondering how you see that, that, that bump and how, what, what would be the consequences that the Housing Partnership might see in, if we say, um, took off one story and I, I would, I would think from the plans, looking at the plans, it'd be about eleven units, um, and perhaps one affordable. So what, what are the consequences of that in terms of this project? How do you see that from the housing perspective?
Well, let me, let me just make a couple of comments first. In terms of the Housing Partnership Board, let me just turn off a light. In terms of the Housing Partnership Board discussion, uh, our understanding was that a, an F A R of three point zero was permissible if there was a diversity of housing and, and this is under a planned unit development. And we felt that the, uh, the diversity of housing being provided in this building in terms of the sizes of the units, uh, the live work units, studios, one bedrooms, two bedrooms, three bedrooms, the use of the, the extra rooms provided, uh, you know, more than provided the diversity that would, uh, justify a floor area ratio of, of three point zero. If, you know, we were concerned on the sixty unit proposal, uh, that the units were too small. We didn't think, we didn't like the design of, the interior design of those units. Our, our conclusion was that with a forty-three unit building, the, uh, you know, those were much better living units. Uh, we have realtors on our boards. They felt that they were going to be much more marketable. You know, if the building is made smaller in terms of, of its width, uh, and the units become smaller, then I think the units become less attractive. So that's a concern that, uh, that we had. I think, uh, we've been approaching this in terms of the affordable units. That requirement is specified, uh, you know, it, within the zoning code and, uh, you know, we would apply the percentages consistent with what's in the zoning code.
But in terms of the loss, say, having a building that is thirty-three units versus a forty-three unit building, what, what, what does that do for the community? How, how does that impact it if, if, at, at all?
Well, the, I mean, the desire in the, in the zoning code, uh, and Brian, you can correct me, was, uh, a desire to add about two hundred and fifty housing units, uh, in the entire central business district. You know, you can't add, you know, if you reduce the number of units here, then you're going to have to add more units someplace else to keep that two hundred and fifty target. So we were comfortable with, with the forty-three units, uh, and making that kind of, uh, you know, contribution to what the desire, the overall desires were for the, uh, for the central business district. And, and, and again, we were, uh, kind of interpreting the planned unit development requirements and trying to apply those, those requirements as opposed to, uh, you know, applying any of our, you know, just independent judgment, independent of what's in the zoning code.
Okay. And then just, just to reiterate from my, what I understand, um, you know, it was twenty fifteen and it was a ten to fifteen year, um, goal of two hundred to two hundred and fifty units in the CBD. And so as of now, we have about thirty-three units from Elmwood that's been built. The, the forty, is it thirty-some or forty-some units at Fells Hardware has been repealed? Or appealed, I'm sorry, appealed. And then Waterfield is, is sort of, uh, has, has still the LDA to get through. So, so, so seven years into this ten-year, um, two hundred unit plan, we are at thirty-three, right? I mean, and those aren't just numbers. Those are attached to people's possible homes.
I, I might argue that, you know, we don't have any units yet, uh, because the Fells Hardware building is appealed. The Waterfield has not yet been approved, uh, and this project is still in the approval stage.
Thirty-six to forty Elmwood was fourteen, but is eleven units?
That was permitted, I think, before the CBD zoning went into.
No, that was af, that was after. There are eleven, eleven units, uh, since that would have been built, not permitted. Permitted have been close to, you know, with Fells Hardware was close to, to, to fifty, but there's only been eleven units built, uh, since the zoning was Yeah, in seven years, eleven units in seven years. Correct.
So that points back to one of the comments that the, that the D R C made, which is there are other opportunities in the Center Business District and I'd like to challenge that and ask John if, you know, if he sees other opportunities that are going to bring us to this goal that Yiching is, is pointing out. I think this is really critical to to meeting, you know, the needs of the town.
I mean, my answer to that would be no. I mean, essentially the whole theory of inclusionary zoning is that every development is, is treated equally and that we're looking for a proportional contribution from every development that is designed, approved and built. And we're not looking for a disproportionate share from Ten Converse Place, but we're looking for the, uh, you know, the, what's in the zoning code. The ten percent, uh, of affordable units is, is actually the low end of what communities are, are using around the state. Many of them are at fifteen percent. We felt that the, at that point in time, the ten percent, uh, would, would be supported by town meeting and by the select board. The five percent units that are affordable, uh, between eighty percent and one hundred and twenty percent of income, there's a huge need. And one of the comments that's made, uh, within the housing industry is the missing middle. You know, the middle of the market is missing and, uh, and providing those that eighty to one hundred and twenty percent gets at that missing middle a little bit.
I know Sally sat her hand up. So Sally, would you like to go ahead?
Yes, I would. I want to point out that the whole concept of the P U D involved aggregation of properties. And you'll notice that the P U D three includes not only the property at Ten Converse, but some of the properties that are between Main Street and Converse and Mount Vernon. It excludes three historical buildings, um, that are within that, those bounds. The total square foot of that P U D three, and these are really rough estimates, just taken off of doing volume measures on Google Maps, but it looks like it's a total square foot for the whole P U D three of about fifty thousand square feet of land. And the P U D, uh, excuse me, Ten Converse is about twenty-five thousand square feet. So that would be half of the land of the P U D. And the applicant, um, is proposing to put basically two-thirds of the goal for P U D three housing, which is stated as sixty-five units on one half of the land and it happens to be the half of the land that is subject to other conditions too, particularly related to wet, wetlands, but also related to vistas and views. And so I think, you know, you made, you made a very good point. I think it was John mentioned the word proportional. Um, and that we should not forget that the concept of the P U D involved, um, if not aggregating ownership, certainly aggregating, um, design, code and intent across, um, multiple property lines. So the proportional load on this particular lot would be more in the line of like thirty-three units, which I think is what Yiching just mentioned. Um, so that's my point. Thank you.
Hey Sally, are you taking into account that the other parcels all have existing ground floor, you know, commercial retail uses? Whereas the proposed building is going to have residential units on a large portion of the ground floor?
No, no, I'm not, but there's also, um, plenty of opportunities for housing above and the number of units on the ground floor right now, I don't want to say it's only three because they're three very cool units. And they're important to the concept of diversity of housing in our town. But I was not taking that into account. I'm not sure how that would influence my thinking, but right now I, I'm still saying proportionally, half the landmass, half the anticipated housing addition, sixty-five, thirty-three, thirty-two, whatever.
And that was not the way I was really using proportional. And the way we were approaching this was really the way the applicant, uh, approaches on this particular Converse Place land. You know, if they provided a housing diversity, they would be permitted to build with a floor area ratio of three point zero. And so, you know, that's, that's how we approached it. We weren't saying, uh, you know, that we weren't allocating housing units over, uh, you know, on Main Street where the CVS store is now.
Yeah, and I think further analysis would have to go into the, um, twenty-five K left that is the CVS site that is the other side of the P U D three to really understand, you know, what the F A R is there, what the public amenities are there and what the height would end up being to achieve the one-third that's left if we were to go with the building that we're looking at today for, for the Ten Converse Place. So I, I think it's not a simple, um, math problem here. It's a design problem and it's, it's, it's very complex as Ellen pointed out, you know. I think it's important for us just to keep in mind the original language associated with the, the defining of why one makes a P U D. That's what I'm referring to. Thank you.
So I would, uh, we are, we have, as usual, taking more time than we'd hope to on each of the individual ones. I want to point out just that we, we have to look at this project, um, in isolation as well as in context. So that's kind of two things we have to go on it. And that, um, it's, it's, we look at it in context in terms of how it relates to the buildings around it, but we have to look at it isolation in terms of what can be done on this particular piece of land. So we can't say what might be, how, how we can offset something on this from another, you know, development on another part of the P U D because we don't have that before us. And that's a part of the problem we have is that there is a, um, an overall design goal for the P U Ds, but we can't expect one part of the property on one part of the P U D to do everything for that entire P U D or take a hit because of it, because it isn't the whole P U D. That was not well said. I apologize. Um, anyway, um, I think if, and there are, I know Kurt, you, did you have a question you wanted to ask of John?
No, I, I didn't.
Okay, thank you. Um, so I think, um, where our next, our next committee is Historical. Uh, thank you very much, John. I'm sure that we will be reaching out to you for further, um, comments. As we go forward. So we have Jack Leminaje, who is Chair of the Historical Commission. And so are there any questions for Jack in terms of, Jack, for those of you who don't, maybe you can remind us what the Historical Commission voted so that we understand their perspective.
Yeah, um, I just make a quick statement. The, the, just for, for everyone's clarification, the Historical Commission is the concern with one issue only in the, in the, uh, Center Business District, and that is whether the proposed building negatively impacts the historical resource, resource or not. And in this case, the historical resource is the immediate environment, which as we know is, is remarkably historic. The Historical Commission does not get into the detail that D R C or Housing Partnership or even Conservation do. Conservation Commission do. We, we don't consider far. We don't look at the diversity of the housing stock or the interior design. In essence, we are judging the, only the exterior aesthetics, the bulk of the structure, the materials, choices, landscaping and how it all meshes with the immediate environment. At the first look at this, uh, proposal in an earlier iteration in October, we voted unanimously that we found it did not have a negative in, impact on the historical resource. At our second look at this on February fourteenth with a revised design, which we liked a lot more, we again approved it unanimously, found no negative impact on the historical resource. Uh, you received our three-page memo citing comments made by the attending members, uh, two, two were absent and they added their comments later. I feel the memo speaks for itself, but I'm certainly welcome any questions.
Thank you. Um, any questions? Go right ahead, please. Just dive in.
I can't answer any far questions, that's for sure.
I think a lot of people are really concerned with Town Hall, um, and with, uh, the river and the pond. So what, how, how would, maybe for the sake of people who haven't read a memo, how, how would you say this project relates to those resources?
Well, it's, again, I'm one member out of seven and I, I would only be speaking for myself. My feeling is My feeling is that something's going to go in there. And if it's not this, it's going to be something else. And I particularly was, was taken with the design. I, I like the, I like the curved corners. I like the material choice. I think it meshes well with what we have across the pond with the, with the Town Hall, with the bricks and all that. I think, again, it's, it's a subjective observation that each of our members make as well as including myself. Like it's hard to quantify. You know, it's I don't know what else to say beyond that. I mean, it's purely a subjective opinion. I, I can't go beyond that.
Can I, can I ask Jack if, thank you for, you know, feeling as though the design, which has been worked on really very diligently and, and very, a great team, you know, that it continues to be approved by the Historic Commission, but is the, is the streetscape and the, the footprint of the building of any any concern in terms of historic resources?
Well.
It is changing.
Yeah.
You know, Mount Vernon Street.
Well, we, we talked about that, the, the, the buildings that front on Mount Vernon Street to the west, for instance, Lucia's and all those, those are all right up against the sidewalk. And we felt it would be appropriate for the, for this building to be the same way. We did talk about should it be set back or not? And we would rather have that extra space that they've given on the backside, which we really like that backside, the way it's opened up. My own particular comment during our discussion was that I think it provides the town with another unique gathering place, much like, for instance, the Town Common or the, the benches in front of Starbucks or even behind the library. We've got a lot of nice little places where we can gather and, and this is a, this is a big plus in that regard. So we were, we were really taken with that area where we would assume, for instance, there might be a coffee shop. There's going to be benches, there's going to be those stairs down to the pond. We, we just think it adds a lot in, in that regard. And so do you push the building back off Mount Vernon Street? What do you gain by doing that? I, I think it's better to have all that space in the rear. If you look how the laundry building backs up against the pond now, it's there's no, there's, there's barely room there for a road. You can't even park there. So I think we're gaining a lot of really nice space. I like the way, we like the way the, the bike path meanders a bit. I found that interesting, the question earlier that, that you asked Ellen about the width of the bike path. I'd never crossed my mind, but I would assume it'd be the same width it is, as it is across, say, Genfield. I don't know if that answers your question, but.
Yeah, thank you. It's additional input and, and definitely helps to kind of create the idea of how the, how the town is looking at the proposal. Thank you.
Quick one. I think that the comments that we're getting about scale is and, and how it impacts sort of the historical feel of the town and how, how would you sort of approach that idea of scale sort of, and how that impacts historical resource?
Again, we found that the way that the top two, well, the top floor is stepped back. We felt that that was a big improvement. I think the original design hadn't quite stepped back that far. And that was a concern that we had expressed back in October. The scale, you know, it's the same height as the laundry building. Yes, as, as Ellen Spencer pointed out, it's like five times the square, the, the footprint. It's the same height as the plate, the building, the condo building on Winchester Place. It's the same height as the top of, or I think it's approximately the same height as the top of the spire on the, on the Town Hall. I found that the, that the, that the drawings that Ellen Spencer shared with us earlier were interesting. Although I, I have to take issue with the, with the view from, you know, looking to the east. It appeared that the building, the, I'm sorry, I can't remember the name of it, that Bookins is in, was like it was shrunken. I think that that building is taller than that in, in scale. I think that building's three stories, is it not? And it looked like it was much smaller than that. So I think, yes, it's going to be, it's going to be a bit taller than that, but I don't think the scale is such that it's going to dwarf the downtown buildings as so many people have expressed their opinions about. Yeah, it's going to be bulky and it's going to be, it's going to be new. But I mean, there's a lot of new things that we've gotten used to over the years. I mean, I live on the west side and I still miss Panzy Patch, but I've gotten used to the, to the condo development over there and I, and I like it now. I, I think it's, a lot of this is just a matter of change. It happens and we get used to it. But I appreciate with the planning board and also what the Design Review Committee are doing because as I think Ellen said, this is something that we're going to live with now from now on, so we got to get it right. And I, I really appreciate the work that you guys are putting into this.
And I think we appreciate the work that you put into it. So if there are any other, are there any other questions for Jack? We have 15 minutes left in our allotted schedule, I believe. I think I got that right. No, did I get it wrong?
I think we're till 8:45 and we started five minutes late, so it was going to be 8:50.
Okay, so that, thank you again for reminding me that time is not as fleeting as I thought. So I think next we have our design consultant, Philip Chen. Philip, are you still with us? Somewhere in there.
Good evening.
Hi, so Philip gave us a very detailed memo working through all of the points in the zoning. And can you give us like a really short summary for those out in TV land who may not have read it?
Yes, I, I mean, well, let me just say that, that I began my memo. It, it, it does try to go through each point in the zoning code, but my, I did begin with the assumption, as Yi Ching said, that, you know, the the 3.0 FAR was permitted by the diversity of housing. And my understanding was from Mr. Serbiars, you know, kind of the meetings that I attended and, and his memo that the diversity of housing was present, provided. So my memo starts with the assumption that 3.0 FAR is allowable. And then when I go through the general standards for site plan review for the design guidelines, I do, I, my opinion was that the, the proposed development does meet the intent and the spirit of the design guidelines in terms of taking the, this building, which is, again, 3.0 FAR, but breaking down the mass, breaking down the scale, adding the visual interest, adding the richness of texture and materials. And, you know, articulating the building so as to create that street wall, the continuity of the street wall in downtown, provide views, provide balconies. And, and a big part was about the open space that's created facing the pond. I did in my memo raise a couple, what seemed like issues that are still probably need some more study and resolution. They've already come up in tonight's meeting, like the width of the, the site on, on the east side of the site facing Town Hall, whether there is enough width there for the entrances to the live workspaces, the multi-use path as well as the overlook. And I did raise what seemed like at least a question about the oval space, the civic space, whether it's better programmed as lawn or more hardscape with, that's broken up with green spaces. The only other thing that I would note is in, in my review, because I listed each, each, each of the sections from the zoning code, there were some items which I didn't feel were in the scope of my review, like erosion control, traffic, you know, things like that. But, you know, there were some things that I wasn't totally sure about that had to do with the landscape. So, but, but I saw, but I would gladly answer any questions about those or any of the memo.
Thank you. So once more, I will open it up to the board and if you have any questions for Phil, just jump right in. Because I can't see you all at the same time.
So this is Cheryl. Brian, could you put, bring up the the plan that you were showing earlier of the first floor? And it was kind of the site as well, so it showed the, it showed the other side of, of Converse. Thank you. So Philip, I really appreciated your comments in regards to zoning. And I think, I think one of the things that, that, that I wonder about and it's from, from your standpoint of working with the design team and thinking about all of, about the height and the footprint of this, of this singular building. How would you, how would you talk about that as a, as a design in a context where our village, the town village is, is made up of footprints like the multiple buildings to the left that actually create a mass as well of, at different heights, of course. But, but is there, is there a way of really understanding, you know, the PUD, which is a new zoning type versus the existing context of, you know, the more historic village footprint and, and building height? Do you have anything to kind of add to your comments in, in that regard?
I, I think I understand your question, Cheryl, and so let me respond.
Not a very clear question, I'm sorry.
No, 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 it's, it's a very good question. And, and I mean, I think this floor plan expresses, I think, what you're saying. So to the block on the left, the white block, it's made up of a, a collection of buildings. And it has that kind of articulation and structure and the idea that it, it's sort of not monolithic. And so how do you, in one sort of swoop, create a, a monolithic building, a larger building that takes up this block? But try to achieve that same kind of village feel. Is that right, Cheryl?
Yeah, I mean, we have some goals with the PUDs and, and it's around, we've talked about many of those goals tonight. Whether, and, and you did in your memo as well, but I, but we always, we always judge what we're looking at for the future by what we, what we see in the existing context, right? So how, you know, if we were to say this is, you know, this is a, a future for, you know, the CBD. How does this, how does the public realm or the village benefit from the project that we're looking at? In, in this, you know, in the historic, the historic buildings that could potentially be replaced at any time, right? The, the little guy that's right there, that's, you know, the local dry cleaner with, with a, you know, an insurance company and all these things that are important to us as a community, but, but we, we build, right? We, we change our environments and we want to maintain the character of the, of the town. So is the, is the height of, of the building, the scape that we're looking at now and the height that we're proposing? I've kind of gotten lost in my question.
Let me say, let me say, if I could just pick up from, I think where you're leaving off and, and and, and it's a proposition. Let me just, this is the, my opinion. But I think that what happens at the ground scale at the streetscape is more important than the height. And some of this, I think, is built into your zoning already. Asking for a mixed use building that has a lot of vibrancy, a lot of transparency at this, at the streetscape. I think what this proposed, I mean, this is a unique site because it has really so many different faces, so many aspects to it. So I, I think what is successful in this mixed use development is that you have the Mount Vernon commercial facade. It also includes a residential lobby. When you go around to the east, you have somewhat different program because you have different, different unit types. But it also takes on a different complexion. And then when you get on to the south side, it is, again, an altogether, a different commercial space, a different type of civic space that you create, you've created there. So I, I think it's the, it's the diversity of uses and the diversity of experience at the pedestrian level, which makes this, makes this a, a more vibrant development.
Yeah, I think one of your comments that, that sort of hit home for me was you called out 7.3.17.4.3. I like to name all those numbers. It's kind of, you know, that's our job, right? But historic character enmascing and how it's broken down into the first three floors and then we have a fourth floor and then a fifth floor uniquely each of these floors in terms of height. So if we think about the diversity on the, on the, on the ground level where we're in the public realm and then we're building a community above that of units that, like John Sibier was saying, are successful, that it's a place that people want to live. It's not a mom and pop apartment above a store, right? It's actually a place that draws people in. It's a diversity of units. So it, it draws in a diverse community, all the things that we're trying to build as a, you know, as a, as a community going into the future, not a community going backwards, right? So I, I thought that this, this really moment that you sort of drew together the idea that historic character also talked about, the function of the building going forward, being part of our community was really that, that to me really stood out as, as a way to really understand how how we, how we move forward with buildings that are multi-use in housing.
Thank you.
Wish I'd landed with a question, but I didn't, sorry.
I have a, I have a really quick question. Well, the question is quick. I don't know if the answer is, one of the phrases that we've heard, it's both in the, in the CBD zoning bylaws and it's in the comments that I've heard people make is this term monolithic. And I think that there's, from, as an architect, what, what would you consider to be monolithic? But when you hear the word monolithic, what does that? What does that elicit from you?
To me, that a monolithic building would be one that has a kind of sameness all around it. Kind of flatness. Kind of a consistency that becomes sort of, you know, repetitive. I think what this in, 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 it's not, it's not a formula. So it's not, it's, it's not a formula to make a building not monolithic. And so one of the things that I think the architects said last week is that for the most of the building, it is articulated as a three-story mass, but at the corners of the, at the corners, at the northeast corner as well as the southwest corner, you know, you start, you see, and also at, at, at the residential lobby, you see the fourth, the four-story expression of those corners. And so where, there you might see some more height. It actually, I think, functions to break the building up at these corners, these sort of pivot points. So it doesn't look like it's a it doesn't have that kind of sameness or that quality of flatness all around the building. I think that one of the things that this building uses, this design, I should say, uses well is also that, you know, I think that one of the things that this building uses, this design, I should say, uses well is also the, you know, depth in in the building. And so, you know, it has a transparency at the street level. It has, you know, consistency of windows at the middle, but at the top, the windows, the the openings get a little bit deeper. And then at the fifth floor, the the building itself sits back. You know, you have the balconies that kind of come in and out. So and and even in this this elevation here, you see the articulation, the in and out of the east elevation of it. So I think that begins to break down the idea of just a building, which is a a monolithic block. Does that help? Yeah.
Yeah. And I let's see if I can see who, anyone else? Have any questions for Philip? You can go ahead.
Yeah. Thanks, Mr. Chen, I think this has all been really helpful. I think that so in this special permit, there is a portion about impact on neighborhood character. And I think that's what we were we were talking about a little bit more. But I think that, you know, people are sort of kind, I think, at best, maybe trying to tolerate that this thing is here. But if you can you see in ways that maybe that this impact on the neighborhood character is actually, you know, in in enhances somehow and and brings more to it than it has currently in in how to I I see how it's like drawing from the current space right now. But how 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 can you see it being, you know, adding more to the existing sense of place right now?
I I mean, I think the premise of this of this development is that it adds vitality to your downtown. And that's to me, that's it's not, it's not necessarily a an aesthetic or physical thing. It's the idea that you're bringing you know, residents, families downtown, then you have a very active streetscape. I think one of the things, maybe, maybe this is just just in from an urban planning point of view, the continuation of the street wall along Mount Auburn, that that kind of continues, that continues that that activity further down Mount Vernon. Defining defining the street. It does also punctuate, I think, at that northeast corner, you know, with that commercial space entrance there. So that does provide some civic space. And and I think everybody so far at least has really appreciated the open space that faces the pond. And, you know, it's not a not only a space, because, you know, spaces exist throughout there, but it's a space. The idea being that it's rimmed with people and activities that people, it's drawing people either with a bike path or the commercial space or even the residence. So I I I think part of the premise of this building is about creating a really attractive place for people to come and to use, whether the residents or not. So I I do think all those things being succeed succeeding, that that does add to the town.
Thank you. Kurt or Sally? We have, I believe I am correct in saying we now have approximately 15 minutes left. Just so people know what the time is.
And the hope is that we do have a consultant here as well that we invited, so just I've been meeting another consultant.
Yes, yes. So just just so people know that our what our schedule is. Sally, did you want to ask a question?
No, I'm 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 just still in listening mode.
Okay. Thank you. Kurt?
I mean, Philip, I thought your memo is really, you know, very, very comprehensive. I really appreciate how you addressed, you know, all of these specific points that, you know, were being asked to the that were tasked with trying to interpret ourselves and getting in your view. I think maybe the one question I have is, I I know, I think you approached this with, as you as you indicated at the beginning of your 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 comments here tonight, that the 3.0 F A R was to some extent, you know, a foregone conclusion or or, you know, you're operating as though that is just a given. And I guess my question is, you know, I think the way I interpret what we're tasked with doing is that, you know, the diversity of housing may allow us to grant up to a 3.0, but does not necessarily provide for it as, you know, a right. And we're being tasked with understanding whether or not this whole package really justifies that additional, you know, F A R, that point five. And so knowing, I think, that, you know, one one lever to address, you know, some of these criteria that you've highlighted includes actually, you know, changing the F A R, potentially pushing back and pulling back on it. Would that would that change materially any of your comments, I guess, in here? And maybe that's an unfair, very large question, but I'm just curious to get your reaction to, you know, the 3.0 not necessarily being a given at the beginning, if that would really have changed your your view dramatically?
It it's it's hard to say, i- it's hard to imagine what that proposition would be. I I do recall just in seeing the history of this project, that there were some projects that were maybe lower, but wider or or maybe longer, however it is, took up more footprint. As well as there were projects that were took up less footprint, but that were taller. And and I think if somebody said this was sort of the the kind of the the happy medium of it. You know, if I I mean, just doing the math in my mind, if you were to take one floor off, you know, if you took 20% of the of the square foot square footage out of this building or so, somewhere around there. You know, then you're 2.4 F A R and it's no longer, you know. Well, I guess it's still be a special permit, but you know, you wouldn't be asking this question. You know, you wouldn't be needing to grant the the extra F A R. And if you if you further shrunk the building, then maybe you're a 2.0, you know. So I I think part of the part of, I believe, what you all are weighing as a planning board is is what Diop said, you know, at the last hearing is do the benefits outweigh the potential adverse effects? I I don't know, that's maybe, I don't mean to be evasive about that truth.
No, I know, it's it's a big and definitely loaded question. It's more just in response to some of the feedback, you know, that we've heard from various groups and and the public, I think, over the past couple of days. I mean, that seems to be like, you know, if you're really trying to narrow down on like, what seems to be the hot button topic, it's that. And I think
That's right.
One one comment you made that I thought was really interesting, that maybe does sort of indirectly address this was in talking about the height of the building, I think you you highlighted that, you know, the height maybe doesn't feel that important because the way it's designed, it's it's bringing it down to the street level. And they tried to address, you know, the height. And so it felt like in your view, you know, the height didn't really feel like it was it was that burdensome.
Well, that I I do feel, yeah, I do feel that the height has been nuanced, it's been mitigated through the design work. I know that was one of the big questions of the planning board in the very beginning. You know, given this mass, is there anything you can do? And I think that the design team has done a good job with that.
Great, that's all I had. Thank you.
Yeah, I think I'm ready to say something, if I may.
Sure, let me just, before we go to you there, I've been asked by a recording secretary that everyone who has signed in Zoom, if you could please put your last name as your screen name so that we get you correctly in our minutes. So I know there are a number of people who've come in. I won't call you out to put you on the spot, but if you could please put in your last name so we know who we can put you in the minutes correctly. It just makes it, this is an open meeting, so we we try to make sure that it's because it is public, we have all that information. So go ahead, please, Sally.
So you're muted.
You're muted.
Very sorry. I think that the architects' work to mitigate the scale and the mass of the building is successful to varying degrees on different facades. And that is understandable, considering that the the vision of this building as as it evolved to planning board conversations was to have a really different style to each side of the building, because each side of the building has a very different relationship to the town. And I say again, what I said last time in speaking with the architects, that there, I'm looking up at my wall of of facades here, that there are certain elevations that do not successfully mitigate the height. In particular, the north elevation, which is on Mount Vernon Street. I don't think that the setbacks of the floors are enough to mitigate. I don't think the strength of the fascia is enough to imply that it's really a three-story building. Oh, and by the way, back there is a fourth, and oh, by the way, that back there is a fifth. And don't forget, by the way, back there is all the rooftop mechanicals and screening. So I don't think that as far as they've come with the design, which is a significant way forward, that the mitigation of scale and mass has has succeeded in helping this building fit into the streetscape. The other thing I want to say is that because this building is so high and assuming that 3.0 is a desirable feature for this building, it will dominate views from every hillside surrounding our town. The town is a village on a river in a valley. And the town itself, the town center, is a recognized and registered historical resource. So putting this massive building in the center of a historic village, visible from many view sheds, is it's a significant decision that I don't endorse personally. I also want to say that my understanding of the building, of the definition of monolithic is that massing is not broken up, but it's solid, it's all one piece, going back to when I was a kid and I played with blocks. I realized that from one facade to the next, there is an attempt at blocking the mass like on the on the west elevation with those extruding bays or on the east elevation with the stepping out townhouses. But I don't think that the monolithic character of the building has been diminished by those devices.
Sally, thank you for that comment. I just do you actually, we have five minutes left. Did you have a question for Phil or?
Um, no, maybe not. I just I I marked up his comments with the things that I didn't think.
Okay.
I'm sorry, another question.
Okay, thank you. So we have, I believe that we are next off to Erica Goodaboni of Tool, is that correct, Brian? And Erica, thank you much for your patience. You are muted.
Thank you, members of the board, for the time this evening. I do not have the ability to share my screen at the moment. I do have a few slides. If someone could allow me the ability to share, that would be helpful.
Go right ahead.
Awesome, thank you so much. Try to be quick here. Everyone, see my cover slide.
I see black.
Yeah, it says you've started sharing, but nothing is showing up.
Nope, it seemed to have frozen. Uh-oh.
You're not, you're not frozen, but it's possible you have a dual screen of some kind, maybe?
Everyone's frozen for me at the moment. I apologize. Able to move anything, completely froze up when I shared.
I hope we're frozen and with our best profile towards you.
I'm not sure how to resolve this at the moment. I'm not able to do anything with my oh, boy.
I tried. This is very strange, I tried sharing, but it's not stopping you from sharing.
Send your your document to Brian?
That might be the easiest.
Yeah, I did do that. It's in your email, I have the backup plan.
Okay, I will see that, but just as a tester, are you seeing my screen right now?
No.
You're not?
I my my computer says I'm still seeing Erica Goodaboni's screen.
Oh.
Somebody should.
This is a first. Okay.
I'm gonna show my screen.
Okay. I got it.
Okay. There, we seem to be cleared out.
Okay, they cleared it out, I think. Erica was virally taking over.
Is Erica still with us?
I know, it looks like she did get dropped.
Okay.
She did. But I can at least get that memo up. And I, since we we started about five minutes late, I guess we could go five or seven minutes.
We do have someone from Mystic River Watershed Association.
Right, and they were supposed to go to eight forty-five. Here, here comes Erica again, but maybe we won't let her share the screen and I will get that up in just a second.
Is everyone back?
We're back.
All right, I'm sorry about that, I've never had, that was a first for me as well. Brad, were you able to show your screen? Let's not risk that again.
Yeah, sure. So you're talking about in the in the email or this was a PDF or this was a?
I sent you a PDF in an email this evening. Called my PowerPoint, should be just a handful of slides there.
There it is. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, should be going right now.
Much better, thank you. So I'll move through these quickly. I know we're on a on a timed schedule here and I want to be respectful of everyone's time. If you can just jump to the next page there. Just a reminder, I was before the board in December providing my initial peer review of the applicant's traffic impact study for this project. I gave my initial findings in an official response and received a response to comments on February 8th. Next slide, please. And just to kind of restate the position I was taking on this project, I was looking really closely at safety, given the increased pedestrian activity, especially in the evening associated with new residents being in the neighborhood and the restaurant space. Next slide. The response to comments was very thorough and directly addressed all of the comments that I that I had laid forth. A big component to my initial peer review was related to recommendations for mitigating strategies associated with enhancing safety for pedestrians and people moving about the the site and near the site. I won't read through this list, some some of the some of the mitigating measures that I had mentioned was monetary contribution to enhancing the lighting on the multi-use path. Something that I think is very important is installing a crosswalk at that Converse Place in Mount Vernon Street. If it's feasible and if engineering finds it appropriate, there were about pedestrian every other minute during the peak hour crossing there without a crosswalk. Some of these other things are related to the garage, ensuring that there's beacons and things of that nature. And then I am aware of the downtown action plan that is being conducted at the moment with some safety enhancements associated with the intersection of Main Street and Converse Place. And the proponent tentatively accepted contributing to some of the safety enhancements generally related to pedestrian access at that location. Next slide. So I did have a few things that I mentioned that I was concerned about that that were not changed. So I want to bring those to the board's attention for your consideration. I'm specifically looking at Converse Place. You'll see a layout plan that is from the proponent looking at the curb use on Converse Place. North is up on this plan. Something to note here is you have public parking on the west side that is parallel right at, it starts kind of right at Mount Vernon, and then it goes head in by China Sky. The way that this is laid out right now, there's not enough width to really allow for the proposed pickup drop-off loading area that is called out by the opponent at the moment with with also having a drive aisle access. To get a kind of sense of the activity levels on Converse Place, today you're seeing about a vehicle a minute in the morning and evening peak hours of the sixty-six and sixty-two. Project trips associated with the garage, which are residential only, are adding about five in the morning and fourteen in the evening. This is based on the sixty units, I believe that's been knocked down to forty-three, I heard that this evening, so. I, this is based on the sixty units. I believe that's been knocked down to forty-three. I heard that this evening, so slightly lower. If you're looking at the worst case scenario, that's the evening peak hour. That's fourteen vehicles in an hour, which is about a car every four minutes. There's the two lifts there. I know that there's some concern about stacking and backups associated with waiting for the lift service. The worst case scenario would be that one of the lifts is being used for exiting and then only one could be used for entering in the PM peak hour. Which would mean that you'd only have that one to utilize. You have space for about six. Before it hits Mount Vernon Street. I don't foresee a scenario where six vehicles are going to be stacking up when they come every four minutes. And the vehicular lifts serve in the two to four minute window. So a lift should be coming at least as frequently as a as a vehicle showing up in the PM peak hour. However, if they're backed up potentially like I showed on the screen with my cartoon here. You will have issues with drive aisle access on Converse Place. So I would, I would push to consider, I know this, I know parking is a hot commodity and very critical. But I could see some concerns about not having a drive aisle here. And I would be thinking about those three parking spaces becoming an issue after this building gets built. Next slide. I'm speaking a little bit more about Converse Place. I'd be remiss to not at least acknowledge. The layout that you have today. I know the Woolworth was not something that. That the town is going to go forward with. However, you know, you have a gap in a sidewalk on the west side. That's kind of unique in the central business district. Generally, there's connected sidewalks everywhere. You know, something to really consider and think about is providing a connected sidewalk in this area. I would add that the head-in angle parking is sort of a strange scenario for a public street. You know, I even have used those spaces before and navigating those with activity, additional activity that's going to be happening. Sort of backing out into that street. I could see some concerns there. I, I would recommend that those become, you know, maybe parallel spots or that you look to possibly connecting the sidewalk and or both. Next slide. And then Mount Vernon Street, I had made a recommendation. For enhancing mitigation strategies to reduce the illegal loading on Mount Vernon outside of the public safety building. Actually, while I was out there doing a site visit, I saw, you know, a truck pull up and just kind of linger there. I, you know, I think the road is wide there for fire engines to be able to quickly navigate out of the public safety building. I understand that you wouldn't want to pull the curb out because I think you need the space for the trucks. However, right now there's just some signage. I think you could go a long way by adding some pavement markings as well. They're generally more effective than signage. They have them in town now, the kind of yellow hashed out with the no parking. I think that's something that should be considered here as well. And I think the next slide is just acknowledging the next steps, which is a formal letter with response to comments to to the board. Thank you.
Thank you. That was very thorough. We are currently about five minutes over our allotted time and we do have. So I would request the board to hold on to any of their questions until we meet again. And we still have a series of questions. That the board passed to Brian to pass to the developers and hopefully we will have those answers in writing in a short time period. So at this point, unless the board, does the board want to pose a couple of questions to Tool Design or? Shall we keep those questions till next time?
Yeah, but I don't have any questions, but I would endorse if we have them, trying to address them now as opposed to delaying.
Okay.
I would agree with that completely.
Okay.
Can, I have a question. So the, the. On Converse Place, the the driving width and the current existing parking and then. The, what you were showing graphically was the stacking that could potentially happen. For the automated parking. I, I thought I heard you say that you didn't think the stacking would happen because of the two to four minute. You know, time related to automated parking, so. It does, is this graphic representative of? I guess I'm not, I'm kind of wondering what this, what this actually represents.
That's a great question. Thank you. So I wanted to show the potential stacking space available so that I could visualize. The maximum capacity should the lift be. Not what it says it would be. I guess I wanted to kind of acknowledge that there is space for up to six, which I do not see happening. And I also, the other side of that coin is that the proponent has laid this out. I asked for curb use. Proposal for what they were expecting to do with Converse Place and. They are proposing a pickup, drop-off and loading area on that side, which I do not think would work here. Because then you will definitely be blocking and you'll have a situation where people are turning on to Converse Place. And hitting up against, you know, people that might be unloading their groceries or whatever they might be doing. So I have some concerns. Because, you know, you have that density and. When you start to have, you know, residential and restaurant up against the curb like this. There's just bad behavior sometimes when it comes to kind of drop off, pick up and loading, and I wouldn't want to encourage it there. And when you're not supposed to be doing it on Mount Vernon Street because of the public safety building and you shouldn't do it here because you're going to block the drive aisle. I think you're going to have a little bit of a challenge with with the activity levels here, so I would not, I would. Either, you know, there's two options here. It's removing the one-hour parking on the west side. Or, you know, really regulating that that other side as being a drive-by only and not for pickup, drop-off activities.
So, so what if the the red spaces you show here as as pickup, drop-off or loading stacked? What's the success rate or, I mean, it's a little scary seeing the the loading in front of our public safety building, but. Here, we don't have that condition. What's the success of saying in peak hours? You're not allowed to park there. And off-peak hours, you potentially could park short-term in order to unload your groceries or whatever, you know. So we're not eliminating parking spaces altogether, but we are trying to manage. You know, some of the challenges of. A new residential entry versus, you know, three parking spaces in a back alley.
So I'm super quick, just a. Point of clarification about that the select board is this, yes, this is, it's somewhat in the in the purview. Clearly having to do with traffic in the site plan review and special permit, but in terms of actually creating new spaces or taking spaces away. That is a select board endeavor, so just want to say that.
Okay. Okay, thank you. I think I'm trying to solve a problem that is not ours to solve. Thank you, Brian.
Any other questions? I have one and it is also about something we can't solve and that is. Nearly the location of the garbage or the refuse collection area. Is that on public property or is that on private property? That's the bump out in the middle of the parking on the other by China Sky. Erica, one of the, one of the pictures, Erica very nicely drew a green line around it, that one. Or almost a green line, that that strange bump out, is that actually on the street? Does anyone know? Because when I walk by there, it looks like they just plopped it in the middle of the street.
Brian, if you can pull up a site plan.
Yeah, I was, I was just gonna pull up a site plan.
There are, as an underlay to all of these site plans that we look at, there are property lines. And I do notice that like Scotty Insurance juts out into Converse Place more than the back of the CVS. If that's what I'm looking at. So perhaps the site plan would be helpful at this moment.
If, if no one knows the answer to that within the next fifteen seconds, it's not, it's.
But it's a very good question.
It's just, I know this is again a select board issue, but. It just breaks the flow. It makes it very difficult to put in parallel parking instead of the angle parking because. It's just this thing. Any case. Are there any other further questions for Erica?
May I just take one more moment? I did want to acknowledge the, I meant to bring this up, the question about the the path along the water and kind of where. What the recommendations for width are there? I'd say generally, eight is the minimum, which I believe is on the site plan and is what is out there now. Ten is really preferred, which I believe is what the the track community bikeway further to the north. Is ten feet, so I think, I guess I just wanted to throw that in.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And just to point out super quick, these are owned by the town of Winchester. Okay. So this little bump out section is town property.
Okay. I wonder, yeah, that's a, that's historical interest, I guess. So at this point, I think that we need to. Postpone till time certain or continue, I'm sorry, continue till time certain, which would be. I'm hoping everyone could make it a week from tonight at seven fifteen. Is that possible?
Do you have, I just want to make a note that. If it's possible, I don't know, I don't know if it's possible for the board. But I think this next meeting or the potential meeting on the fifteenth might be longer than usual, just based upon the past. Two years. So the idea is, should we start potentially earlier or plan to stay later? In order to keep on track.
I, I think that, I know that moving to seven was difficult for some members of the board, so I would just we go later.
I can make an exception here.
You can make an exception. Kurt, can you make an exception?
I'll try. I have to ask the boss, but I.
Okay, well.
Are we talking about next week or the fifteen?
We're talking about.
I would say next week.
Next week.
Maybe we can still continue to seven fifteen and figure this part out later in order to move on.
We can continue to seven. Why don't we could, we could move this fifteen minutes up to seven and deal with updates. This would be presumably. We would dedicate probably the whole evening to this unless we have other pressing business and I'm sure I just blew our agenda, Brian.
Whatever it is to keep this moving.
Okay, so why don't we, why don't we go for seven o'clock, continue till seven next week and we will work our way through. Why don't we tentatively say seven till ten, but we don't have to go till ten? It's if people start falling asleep, we can stop, but I, I don't want people to feel like we have to stop at nine thirty. Is that okay? Okay, so I guess I would need a motion to continue this hearing until Tuesday, March eighth at seven PM. And is there a second, please?
Second.
Excellent, roll call vote. Cheryl. Cheryl, you're muted.
Aye, aye.
Thank you. You change?
Aye.
Sally?
Aye.
Kurt?
Aye.
And I say aye as well. I want to thank everyone for putting up with us this evening, all of our consultants. I apologize to Brian Manter from Engineering. I know we didn't get a chance to hear from Engineering. Thank you to. The list is far too long to go through, so just know that you're, you were very appreciated and all the hard work that everyone's been doing is very much appreciated. This is a very complex issue and all of your input has been extremely valuable. And we will see, I'm sure, a good chunk of you in a week. Next, we have before us. Where, where did they go?
I'll actually introduce Acting Town Manager Beth Rudolph, who's going to kind of lay the groundwork here, talking about the Davidson Park. And Mystic River Watershed, and she will actually introduce the number of people that are here.
Oh, my lord, okay.
It's a, it's a little party, so maybe Beth, if you're there.
I'm here, yeah, thank you.
Wonderful, alright, why don't you go right ahead, Beth?
Sure, yeah, thanks, everyone. Um, so as, as folks may remember, we've done over the years, a variety of kind of analysis of. At the Aboriginal River as it flows through Davidson Park. Town meeting actually funded kind of a feasibility level study. I'm gonna say back in maybe two thousand fourteen and we hired Horsey Witten to review a couple of options to look at ways that we could improve. The Aboriginal River and it, as it flows through Davidson Park, they, they developed three alternatives. A kind of two pond restoration alternatives and then a riverine restoration alternative. And, and unfortunately, just because of the financial realities, what it takes to design and construct a project like that. It didn't really go much further than that initial kind of feasibility level study. And then in two thousand thirteen, there was a settlement provided that provided out four point two five million dollars. To resolve environmental liabilities related to the Industry Plex Superfund Site in Woburn. Which included the restoration of wetlands, streams and pond habitats in the Aboriginal River Watershed. So the town of Winchester was lucky enough to submit several grant proposals under that. Under that settlement money. And in twenty twenty, the Natural Resources Council trustee, which is a group that. It's comprised of a variety of federal state officials that makes decisions. They produced a financial, excuse me, a final restoration plan and environmental assessment for the Industrial Plex Superfund Site. And as part of that, the town of Winchester was allocated up to five to six hundred thousand dollars towards the riverine option. For improvements at Davidson Park, which includes floodplain and riparian habitat restoration. So the first step in that process for us to access that full amount of the grant funding is to complete a feasibility study. And so we are working very thankfully with folks from the Mystic River Watershed Association and also from Horsey Witten. To start to complete that feasibility study, which is really to. Understand to do kind of a public outreach campaign and you'll hear a little bit more about that tonight. To. You know, get feedback from people about the proposed riverine option and then ultimately it will go to the select board at the end for a recommendation. And we'll bring that back to the trustee council and hopefully we'll be able to get access the remainder of the money. To allow us to move into design for the project. So with that, I know Catherine Pedemonte is here from the Mystic River Watershed Association. As well as Daria Clark. I'm not sure if Neil Price is here as well. Okay, so just Catherine. So I'll turn it over to Catherine to, to take it from there. Thank you.
Beth, thank you so much for that introduction overview and thank you everybody for having us. I'm here with Daria Clark, my colleague. So we're going to just walk you through a few things quickly. Brian, is it okay if I go ahead and share a screen? I think I'll need some permissions. Okay. Alright, and can everybody see my screen? Okay, so Daria, I'm going to turn it over to you and I'll, I'll hop back in when we get to the engagement piece.
Awesome, great. Thanks, Beth, for that great introduction and providing a bit of background on this project and of course to the board for having us tonight. I'll start off with just giving us some reference around where Davidson Park is. So Davidson Park is shown here. It's north of Cross Street, west of the train tracks, south of Calvary Cemetery and east of Washington Street. And as Beth mentioned, we've been working with others in the town for some time on this. Almost a decade ago, there was that feasibility study that happened, which had three options that Beth mentioned. Could you go to the next slide, Kat?
Yeah, sorry, hold on.
So for those that might not be familiar, Davidson Park was originally a natural river-wetland system, pre nineteen thirties. And then around nineteen thirty, it turned into a manicured park with a beautiful pond. However, over the years, the pond infilled with sediment and vegetation. It was dredged once, once in the nineteen seventies. And then, of course, began to infill with sediment and vegetation again, which is what brought kind of renewed attention to the park. Around that twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen timeline. So the three options that Beth mentioned, one was to return it to a kind of natural riverine wetland. System, the other was returning it to that nineteen thirties large pond and the last one was a hybrid approach. And these three options went to a public process, which was.
Um, and these three options went to a public process, uh, which was primarily attended by local abutters. Um, and the two designs that were advanced to the thirty percent design stage were the large pond and the hybrid option. Um, and that was kind of where the project sat until now, where we got, uh, this recent funding from N R D, which will only fund this third riverine option, which, um, was not selected as one of the two preferred options in the public process. Um, however, thinking back to that time, this third option really did not get a fair vetting in front of the entire town. Um, and so we thought it is definitely worth doing another, um, sort of feasibility engagement process, uh, to see whether there is kind of large scale support of this option in the town. Um, so the current phase is to, to reevaluate this riverine option because it's the only one that has funding behind it. Um, and if it's found to have broad support, um, to then try to move forward and get additional funding for the project. So, uh, next slide please, Cat. One back.
Oh, sorry. Oh, here we go.
Um, so here's the ten percent design of that riverine option overlaid on the current park. Um, so even though the riverine restoration is the only design option that N R D will fund, there's definitely still a place for public input, particularly with consideration. Um, to how much of the existing grass space will remain as grass, uh, open space versus be converted to wetlands. Um, so that's important to know. And, uh, pass it over to Cat for the engagement piece.
Sorry, thank you so much. Um, so I, you know, I would say community engagement is always very important, but in this situation, it's, it really is especially important, as both Beth and Daria mentioned. Um, additional funding for this, uh, restoration and open space improvements really will um, rest upon what, you know, how, how the community feels about, about, uh, this design. Um, so in terms of broad community engagement goals, um, you know, obviously we're looking to, to gather community input on, uh, you know, essentially not, do you like this design or not, but how do you use the space? How would you like to, to use the space? And is there a win-win between, um, open space improvements and an ecological restoration, and in this case a riverine restoration? Um, so we're gonna seek to provide multiple opportunities for engagement. We will seek to engage abutters as well as town residents more broadly. Um, and also seek to ensure meaningful engagement of, uh, any vulnerable populations or E G communities in the area. Uh, in terms of the timeline and sort of how we'll be going about this engagement, it is a quick timeline because of, you know, due to grant deadline. So, um, this will all be happening between now and the end of June. Um, so currently we have a project webpage that is live, that includes a survey, again, trying to get it, you know, how do you, how do folks use the space and how would they like to use the space? On my final slide, I will, I will share the link to that webpage and encourage everybody to please go and fill out the survey and share with friends and family. Um, so this in February and a little bit of early March, we're, um, kind of, um, introducing this internally. So we were at Concom, uh, select board last night and, and with you all tonight. Uh, next, this upcoming month in March, we'll be doing some targeted outreach to local organizations. Um, and then follow that up with some flyers and some temporary signs at Davidson Park, uh, with the aim of bringing people out to an open house onsite, um, in early May. And again, all of this is really trying to solicit input in terms of open space improvements. And again, see if there's a win-win between that riverine restoration and, and what the community would like to see for open space. Um, so at that point, we will hand all of that input over to, to the consultant, Horsey Witten. Um, and they will see what they can do in terms of, um, putting those, those pieces together and bring that back to the community, uh, mid-June for a public meeting. Um, so at this point, you know, again, we wanted to keep this part of the presentation short. We're really early in this process. Um, we'd love to hear from all of you if there are any particular thoughts, suggestions, questions you have. Um, and also, of course, like to direct you to mysticriver.org backslash Davidson Park, um, to fill out the survey. Um, so thank you for this, and at, at this point, I'll stop sharing and open it up for any conversation.
Uh, thank you very much. I first have to say that, uh, I'm a big fan of you guys. So. Really happy that you're involved in here. Um, I have a couple of questions real quick. Um, one is, uh, what is the town's role in this? Do you require some sort of action from the town? Do you need permits? Do you need easements?
So I will say this is a town project, so the town has brought on Horsey Witten to look at the ecological restoration and then brought us on to, to run the community engagement.
Right, that's the, the town of Winchester is the one who had, uh, gets the grant money for this project.
Okay, okay, thank you much.
And then, so this first feasibility stage is just, you know, really conversations and ultimately there'll be action required by the select board to endorse the, um, you know, the riverine option before we can move into design. And then, you know, as we go along, there'd be multiple permitting steps in the design process with state and local, um, authorities.
So the, the select board has some say and presumably the Concom also has some say in this.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, ultimately, the project would be permitted by the Concom. At, at this point, it's the select board that would kind of endorse after this public comment gathering feedback from folks, making sure we can kind of build a consensus around the, the plan that, uh, the riverine option. But ultimately, it's the, the trustees are looking for the town through its select board to kind of make a final decision and recommendation as to which is the, that we support the preferred alternative being the riverine restoration option.
Okay, um, I have more questions, but I will wait until everyone else has a chance. Anyone else have a question?
So can you perhaps repeat if you already said, but give me the helicopter high level view of the goals of this whole effort here?
Yeah, so.
Okay, go ahead.
Actually, start Beth and then I'll fill in.
Sure, yeah. Yeah, so I mean, really, the, like I said, the project started, um, you know, in the early two thousand teens, um, there was a lot of effort actually by Drew Bittar, who used to be a member of this board, to move forward with getting, um, the original feasibility study funded by town meeting. And at that time, we did hire Horsey Witten and we went through a whole process where we evaluated different options. And there was a, a small working group that was comprised of, uh, neighborhood representatives, members from the conservation commission, members from the planning board, um, and a few other folks. So it was, you know, somewhat limited outreach as part of that project. We did, as I said about, you develop the three options. Um, and now because of this grant funding, we're moving forward, um, with this riverine option as the kind of next, as the preferred option for us to evaluate and then hopefully move into design. Catherine, I don't know if you wanna jump in and add anything more there?
No, I think you, I think you got everything.
Thanks.
So, but I guess follow-up question, um, the riverine option and the goals of all of this, I heard you mention mitigation of the toxins that came down from the superfund site. Um, um, and I heard you mention that there was a pond that, uh, was an unnatural pond that eventually neutrified and came back to being wetland or meadow or whatever it is now. But, um, are there programmatic and environmental goals that you're reaching for with this effort?
Yeah, so I mean, the, the original project was because, uh, you know, anyone who's a casual observer of the area can see that the, what was the pond, which was created as kind of part of the Calway landscape in the nineteen thirties, um, is filling in. It, it, it's really, it's not a natural pond. Um, it's, it was dredged, I think. Um, we said earlier in the presentation, maybe in the nineteen seventies, and that type of, um, you know, that type of pond requires maintenance and, and maintenance is expensive when you have to deal with dredging and sediment remo- removal and disposal. So, um, that was why the original project was developed, you know, back in, um, like then, you know, two thousand fourteen, I think, is when it was funded at town meeting. Um, because really we need to look at what is a more sustainable solution out here. So there were three options evaluated. One was kind of the status quo, which is to, you know, dredge the pond and create basically a, um, a layout similar to what the Calway kind of vision was. The second was to create a smaller pond and develop some sort of sediment for bay at the upper ends where we, the town could maintain it on a, in easier manner, which I think is not actually very easy to do at all. And the third was a riverine restoration option, which is basically what the river, what it's turning into today naturally, right? Because as sediment fills in, we get more of a riverine as, as opposed to an open water solution.
The, the meandering nature of the, the river is a natural feature that it's.
Exactly.
Going it to essentially.
Right. It didn't, it doesn't want to be a pond.
No.
That's not what it, what it was, uh, you know, what it was originally, and that's not what it wants to be, so it does, um, tend to fill in over time.
That's very helpful, thank you.
So I just wanted to clarify one thing, um, you know, with the, with any of those options, there will be some sudden removal necessary, but the goal of this project is not to kind of like remediate any of the contamination from the superfund site like that. It's, this money was, um, a settlement as part of the superfunds, kind of ongoing process to, to mitigate for that, for that, um, you know, detrimental environmental impacts. But it's not a requirement as part of the grant funding. I mean, that, like, the funding also, like, the fish ladder at the Scally Dam in, in Woburn. So there's no specific requirement as part of the grant for that relates to sudden removal or, and, and any sort of other, um, mitigation in that manner.
Okay, uh, any other questions from the board?
I guess just really quick follow-up. So the, the goal in the, um, community engagement is to get more information, not only about, um, well, to get more information about the design and the programmatic deliverables for the park, is that right?
Yeah, and I think it's more, less the design and more the programmatic deliverables that will feed into the design. So for example, if, you know, we send up a survey and everybody says we, all we wanna do is play soccer, well, we should probably leave the lawn. If people, you know, if a few people are like, I play soccer with my kid, but really I like bird watching and I like passive recreation and I like walking, well, we can probably let go of some of the lawn in favor of more habitat and wetlands and space for that meandering river. Um, so again, I think we're trying to gather how do folks use it and does that fit in with, with a riverine restoration?
Okay. Thank you very much. I, I look forward to a, another horned pond in our backyard. I wanna see some birds. Uh, so, uh, thank you all very much, and I'm sure that we will, uh, have discussions with you in the future on this. So, uh, and also thanks for your patience and sticking with us past our agenda.
Thanks for having us. Yeah, thanks for having us.
Thank you so much.
Take care.
Where are we in our agenda now? We do have two things left.
Twenty-one Laurel, um, at the moment, and the, uh, the applicants are here. So, um, they, uh, just introduced this super quick to try to help. So this was based upon petition that we saw a few, several weeks ago, uh, based upon, um, it was, uh, two series of walls along two property lines. Um, it was recommended for unfavorable action from the planning board before it went before the Z B A. The applicants are now back, uh, with a revised drawing, with revised, uh, size of, uh, with, with a revised uh, slope and wall, and, um, I, I think they're here to explain, uh, the details of that. The, the board did not get, um, just so you know, David, the board did not get, uh, your plans until today at some point. So, um, it might, you might wanna walk, walk everybody through real, uh, as quickly as you can and, uh, open it up for questions after that, I think makes the most sense.
Okay, awesome. Thank you very much for, for having me back.
I'm gonna put it up now, uh, for you.
Oh, yeah, I, I can share my screen or you can, whatever you do. Awesome. If we wanna start by scrolling to the top here, um, all right, so in the last meeting, um, first of all, thank you for writing out, um, all the discussion points. That, that was much easier to go back to, to our team and, and work on some of the concerns, um, that you guys had in the last meeting. Um, so some of the things that we did were, uh, the wall on the left side, where there's the heaviest amount of slope. Uh, we moved that wall over an additional three feet to move it, um, a little bit more towards, um, the middle of the property to get it away from the neighbor's property, but it also brought us back towards a little bit up on the design, which allowed us to, uh, make that, that wall on the backside, um, take off that, that eight foot that I think everyone was a little bit more worried about along that backside there. Um, we also, uh, tiered the back wall a little bit. If you scroll all the way down to the second page, past all of these designs. Yeah, this design here, this shows the, the grade of the entire back portion of the property and exactly how far the wall will stick up over that gradient. Uh, I think this was one of the main concerns, considering that's where the, the tallest of the walls would be. Um, so it starts off, as you can see, all the way to that left point. Um, it starts off at, at two feet, um, at that first tiered section. Um, and then it gets all the way to the point where it is five feet, eight inches at that middle point there. To the middle, sorry. Five foot, eight inches there, and then we continue to kind of tier it down to make sure that the, um, we're minimizing how much wall our back neighbors see. And then for about a foot there, it gets to six foot eight. So for, for about a foot, that's the highest point that the wall will be on that backside. Um, we did bring this to the design committee, uh, after visiting you guys. And what they had talked about instead of a fence, um, was densely, uh, dense bushes. They actually, um, sent us specifically which ones to use. There, there's these juniper bushes. It's similar to what we did in our front yard where there is about an eight foot wall, um, where they put, uh, dense bushings instead of a fence, um, to kind of give it that feel and it wasn't such a large presence along that backside and along the side. Um, that's what they had mentioned as a suggestion there. Um. Some of the other concerns were, uh, design concerns. There was a curved wall on one of our designs and a straight on the other, so we just had to go back and fix it. So that it was all, all straight lines and, and everything, um, added up and, and made sense. So I think this, this minimizes slightly some of the, some of the concerns that there were before about an eight foot wall. Um, getting it closer to that six foot mark, um, there is a point where it's at six foot eight for about a foot or so on that backside. So I can answer any questions that may have. I know I sent an email and countered kind of the six points and, and made it as, um, tried to make it as, uh, as easily explained as possible, but I can also take any questions on why we did certain actions as well.
Um, I see a hand up already. Yechin, please.
Yeah, just, uh, thank you for coming back to us. Um, so can you go back to the section, please, or the, um, it's just, just a little bit curious about that, um, steady drop of one feet and then, um, a sudden four foot drop and why it wasn't sort of a little bit, uh, less drastic. Um, it's more at the bottom, um, Ryan, yeah, keep going, yeah, there. So, um, you know, there's a one foot drop, one foot drop, and just drop, and then all of a sudden a four foot drop. Was, was there a way to sort of just alleviate that so you don't get the six eight?
Well, if we move, you're saying move it towards the left or towards the right?
No, I just wonder why it was, um, like a one foot drop instead of say a two, so you would just, rather than have a one and then a four, you know, to, to reduce that six eight situation that.
Okay, I see what you're saying here. This, this one, this last one for drop, drop that down about a foot or so.
Yeah.
Brings it right around five eight.
It seems kind of a drastic jump.
Yeah.
Scale is all.
Okay, yeah, I can see that.
Then you wouldn't even have to explain away the six eight, but, you know.
Yep, okay, that's a good point.
Um, I have, Yechin, are, are you, are you done?
Yeah, I'm done.
Um, I, I have a question about safety. So you're going to have essentially, um, a six foot eight, six foot eight inch drop from level ground there. Are you, is there gonna be a fence on top of that wall? How do you prevent someone from taking a tumble?
Yeah, we had, that's what we had talked to the design committee about, and they had recommended, and, and I'm open to suggestions, obviously, as well. I wanna make sure that, you know, everybody feels good about this is, is possible. Uh, they had suggested, um, dense, um, bushes and instead of a fence.
I, I'm sorry, I, I, I misunderstood. I thought that that was gonna go onto the grade, which you're saying the bushes are actually on the terrace.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, okay.
The drop off so that it, um,
Okay.
It, it allows any foot traffic to not be able to go through, but also allows the neighbors to see, in, instead of having high wall and then another six foot fence, um, they had felt it was more appropriate to add, um, dense bushings uh, instead of a fence, um, just, just in terms of the appeal of it. Um, I, I like it too. I thought that was a good suggestion by them and one that we're certainly willing to do. Um, I, I thought it made more sense too.
Yeah, and I, I second Yechin's, uh, suggestion. Yeah. And I, I second Yechin's suggestion, which I think I understood, but.
Yeah, it's just a gradual, you know, drop. Like one, 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 and then all of a sudden a four.
Yeah.
Where one could easily sort of scale that.
Yeah. And yeah, any other comments from the board? I think we have lost Cheryl. She unfortunately had to leave us early. She sent us email, which is the only reason I know that she left. So I mean, I, I, I think this is a much improved design over what you had last time. So I, I'm much happier with this one. I think it, it does fix a number of the issues we had.
They will, they will be back before ZBA. I don't know if you're going to be, if there's enough information within the board right now to recommend a vote or rather just to really kind of pass on the notes, which, you know, kind of came out of the meeting, essentially the minutes of the meeting. So that could be fine as well. I'm just trying to point out the options, which is basically, you know, those are the two options. You kind of have a formal vote or just kind of send the notes.
When is, when is the ZBA meeting on this?
When do you meet again next? David, it's next week?
I, I thought it was on my calendar for, is it this, is it this Thursday or, and maybe, I don't know if that one had moved.
I don't know. Yeah, I don't, I, I knew, I thought it was close to this meeting, meeting. I don't think we're meeting again. We meet again next week, but I don't, I think it's happening before next Tuesday. So that does make sense. I think it is this, this week.
Yeah, because I believe the last one was canceled. There was a member that, that couldn't go or I forget the exact reason they moved it to this Thursday.
I feel like it would be sufficient just to pass on the notes. It, it's, it satisfies a lot of the, our concerns from last time and, but, you know, a suggestion to ease that transition downward.
Yeah. I, I, I agree with that suggestion. Kurt or Sally, do you have any feelings one way or the other?
Well, I think the reason that they sort of saved up all the height of the stepping down of the wall until they got to the very end was so that they had more kind of level. And then it drops off a lot as opposed to.
I see, I see what you're saying.
Sloping, kind of sloping, kind of sloping, kind of sloping. I mean, I, I think the whole concept of this was to find more level play area. So I actually understand why they went one foot, one foot, one foot, four was to keep it leveler, more level for the kids to play or for grownups to play.
Well, yeah, I mean, I, I'm wondering is if you, so for instance, if you, instead of doing three one foot drops, you did three one and a half foot drops. Does that affect the usability of the terrace? It would cut down on that. I mean, a six inch every time adds up to, you know, a foot and a half. So that sort of, can you average out some of the drops and still maintain, as Sally points out, that, that usability?
Yeah, I think so. In this drawing here, we go from 97 at the top to 92 when the wall starts. So we're dropping about five feet. So I think that would get it without still a five foot slope. So if we're adding a foot and a half, we'd have a six and a half, seven foot slope. If you go up to the top where the grading, grading.
Well, yeah, I mean, it's just, yeah, it's, it's up to you to decide whether, you know. Yeah.
I didn't, I didn't realize that, but I mean, as, if there's safety, you know, measures there and you're, you're happy with it, I, I, I'm totally fine with that, you know, drastic drop too for your sake.
Yeah, that, that, that is what we, we're trying to obviously balance, right? We're trying to make it as thought as possible, but also not put anybody in a tough spot where it's the town or neighbors, anybody, you know, doesn't like what we're doing. The last thing we want to do is upset you guys or anybody around us. So I think that was our idea was to try to keep it flat, but also take the concerns to heart and make sure we were, you know, making some changes as well and being as pleasant as we could.
My, my impression of the board's comments is that this is what you do inside of that drop is, is pretty much, that's what you get. That's your, your variables to play with. But, you know, to make, you know, but that overall, I think I, I, I would say that is an improvement. Let's see. So Kurt, did you have a, did you want to express something on this?
No, I, I don't, I guess mildly question, maybe David for you is like, I mean, are all the, you know, the immediately abutting neighbors that are like impacted this, are they all supportive of the design?
Yeah. So we had brought our plans over to all the neighbors before the first time that we came to this meeting. They all, you know, when we met with them, we said it looked great. They didn't have any concerns. We left our phone number with everybody. Said, you know, please call us with, with any issues that you may have. Two of the people did call and said, we like the design. This looks great. We didn't hear from the other three. I, I can follow back up with them, but there weren't any concerns and we have given them about a month at this point.
Okay. Yeah, I, I don't have any comments.
Okay. So I think if the board's okay with it, we'll just pass along our comments and I guess.
We can, I just confirmed the ZBA meeting is there, this Thursday, the third.
Yeah. Sally, does that give you enough time to write something up?
Yeah, let me, let me work with Brian first thing tomorrow and we'll get some notes together from this and send it along to the ZBA. These are, these are not a vote. These are just comments from the board.
Yeah.
Roger.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thanks for coming back to us.
I appreciate all of your comments again. Sorry about, I know the, the ZBA is only two days away. So sorry to put you up on a tight deadline.
Welcome to, welcome to local government. That's just the way it is. Thank you much.
All right, thank you.
And so board, we are back to, we're now six minutes over our bedtime. But we do have, I, I would, I would like us hopefully to spend a few minutes in executive session to discuss. Don't start yawning, Kurt. Don't start yawning.
Sorry, I'm trying.
We're only thirty minutes behind.
It's for Brian. We can, we can get through this.
Yeah.
Hey, Richard.
So, Richard. Okay, everyone, then we will be taking a vote to move into executive session for personnel matters. And after that, we will, you will not see us again until next Tuesday. So thank you everyone for being with us. Thanks everyone out in TV land. Thanks to Wind Cam. And so I would welcome a motion to move into executive session.
So moved.
And a second?
Again.
Roll call vote, please. Sally Dale.
Aye.
Kurt Spring.
Aye.
Yechin Scott.
Aye.
And Dejerry says aye as well. Thank you very much.